Welcome everyone here today. It's wonderful to see everyone. Thank you for giving of your time, attention, and dedication to the children of Moore County Schools. And we welcome our audience. Thank you for being here. At this time, we would like to move on to item number three, Reports, Information, and Discussion. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Locklear, Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, everyone. We're certainly glad to have the Town of Carthage leadership here with us today. Appreciate the opportunity to share information with you about our current status and the work and review of where we are with the potential replacement of Carthage Elementary School. We know that's a great need and something that we're hopeful to be able to move forward with. And I appreciate our board's engagement in the process along the way. Ms. Purvis, as you know, has done a great job, her and her team, of diving in and moving this work forward. So I'm going to turn it over to her here in just a second. First, to share out about the work that's been done. Appreciate there's been several parcels of land that were shared with us on Monday and previously. And Ms. Purvis has done some research and will have some information to share on that from our review of that as part of the conversation. And we also know there was a question about the pump station at New Century that came up, I think, at one of your meetings. And we want to give you an update on where we are with that as well. So we have some information to share on that. So with that, I'm going to turn it right over to Ms. Purvis, our Assistant Superintendent for Operations. Ms. Purvis?
All right. Thank you, sir. And again, we do appreciate you all coming today. Just wanted to walk you through kind of from the beginning. So everyone, and I know a couple of you have been here and you've heard parts of this already. So forgive me if we go through it again, but we do have some new faces. So we wanted to present that from the beginning. First of all, what you're looking at here is a copy of our master facility prioritized list. This was approved by the board on December fourth, 2023. That number one project there, we've already finished, which was some district-wide updates to playgrounds and auditoriums and gyms. But highlighted is what we're going to talk about today, and that is the replacement of Carthage Elementary. And so that is our agenda today, to take a look at where we are in that process and what has happened with that process up until now. As we take a look at replacing Carthage Elementary School, this is a picture of our district map. Carthage Elementary currently serves about 310 students from the greater Carthage area. The attendance lines run eight miles north to south and 15 miles east to west. And so you can see there on the right, that dark green in the center is your Carthage Elementary School attendance area. So as we look at what's happened in the progress towards a new Carthage, first of all, you as a town submitted a letter to us prior to my arrival, but it was submitted to the district in 2022 revising the resolution. And when you had that revision, you said you would have a willingness to have it built based on best available data and would support a new school on the current site as well as support one on a different site in the immediate Carthage area. In April of '24, we held a community meeting there at Carthage Elementary School where we invited everyone just to talk through the pros and the cons of building on that current site. And we went through, at that point in time, we did have a draft of what could possibly happen. We worked with an architect and we kind of had a draft of this could possibly happen on this site. Here are the drawbacks to it. Here are the pros and the cons. And ultimately, we came away with a consensus that it's better to build on a new site, seeing that we have such tight ramifications and parameters there on that old site. So knowing that we were going to be moving forward with a new site, the district decided to not put our blinders on, but make sure that we're taking a wide-scope lens at what are the needs of Area One Elementary Schools altogether in the future. So we had the Area One study, capacity study updated. The previous study had indicated that Sandhills Farm Life would be the first to go out of capacity. However, if you've driven through Bass recently, you know the explosion and the growth that Bass has seen. And so with that growth, now Bass Lakeview is expected to go out of capacity. And that was what the new study revealed. So when Etteri came in to do that study, they worked with each municipality as well as the county to get these projections and use live birth rates, et cetera, growth and development that was within the county as a whole. And we revealed these shifts. And they also worked with us to take a look at, if we're taking a comprehensive look at all the elementary schools in Area One, so we're thinking Cameron, Carthage, Sandhills Farm Life, Bass Lakeview, if we're looking at all of those schools in Area One, then where are we expected to be 10 years down the road? Now, 10 years sounds like a long time, but by the time we get this thing coming to fruition, 10 years is probably five years away, right? By the time we get moved into a school. And you and I both know, we all know, that schools need to be 50 years or longer, right? When we take a look at all the schools that are in our county, you can see that schools have served us well way beyond 50 years, and we want to make sure that happens. So as we looked at this, we looked at a 500-seat school, a 600-seat school, a 700-seat school. And ultimately, it was determined that if we could build a school with a capacity of 600, that would place us at 89% optimization for the elementary student population in all of Area One. Now, that is knowing that we would have to maximize capacity, which would mean some cascading enrollment in the future. And so we had a public hearing on February third, next, 2025. And during that public hearing, it was overwhelmingly positive regarding the community's voice to have a new Carthage Elementary on a new site with a capacity of 600. And the overwhelming voice was that they're ready for it. We've been waiting on it, and we're ready for a new school. So as hearing those voices, wanting to expedite that process, we decided to do simultaneously some work with an architect while we're searching for land. So the board endorsed Pinnacle Architecture while we were searching for that land. And we had two overarching principles that were guiding that plan development and the site search. And those two principles were to ensure what's best for Moore County Schools for now and the future growth to come. So taking a look at it now and in the future, and then being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money. How do we do that? With those guiding principles, we were searching for a parcel, and we needed one that's large enough to ensure that we can have a campus. Now, in talking with the school improvement team and the school administration, one of the things they wanted to ensure was that we had a school that was all under one roof, safe access, but they also wanted one story. They wanted to be able to have one story. They weren't interested in two-story. Not that that can't be done. It's certainly suitable, but that was not the desire of the administration or the school team there. As we were looking for land, we were also looking for suitable topography. When you give, just to give you an idea, when the previous elementary schools were built, Southern Pines was built on a parcel of land that had about a 70-foot drop. In 2019, that cost $4 million to navigate that 70-foot drop. And that is a two-story school. So what does that tell us? That school, even though it's, you know, set for 800 students and a little bigger, it's two-story. So the area that it covers, that footprint, is not quite as big as what we'll be seeing with the new Carthage. So we wanted to ensure topography is good. We wanted to locate it where traffic concerns could be mitigated. You know, one of the biggest things we've heard is traffic concerns. And I've said this, and I'll say it again, I can understand anybody here and around being concerned about traffic. Because if you take a look at any of our schools around, and you drive by there at drop-off or dismissal, we've got traffic in the road. Carthage Elementary, Bass Lakeview, Sandhills Farm Life, New Century, Union Pines. That is a given. And so you can only expect, people only can perceive what they know. And that's what they know, and that's what they see. The issue with those schools is that those schools are situated close to the road. When you situate a school that close to the road, and you don't have the ability or the land to get it off of the road and have enough queuing, then you have cars that back up in the road. And so that was one reason we wanted a larger parcel of land, so that school could be situated back, so that we could have lots of queuing, an abundant amount where we could only have ingress and egress and just see cars coming in and out. We also wanted to try to locate that school where we could cascade students, and we talked about that. So when Bass Lakeview goes out of capacity, they are currently at their core capacity, and so is Sandhills Farm Life. So what does that mean? That means per DPI standards, you have to have a certain-sized core to have a certain number of students. They are currently at their core capacity, which means we can't just go in and add on a few classrooms to the end of one of the buildings. We'd have to expand that core, make that media center bigger, make the cafeteria bigger before we can put those classrooms on. That raises the price substantially. And so in an effort to try to save those funds and not have to do that in the future, we were looking at, how could we position the school so it could serve Carthage as it always has, but also in the future allow us to cascade some students from Bass to Sandhills Farm Life and a few from Sandhills Farm Life over to Carthage, negating that need to have to spend millions in the future at Sandhills Farm Life or Bass. And then lastly, we wanted availability and the potential to have water and sewer. So I'll just start quickly with kind of the order that we looked at parcels. The first parcel that really caught our eye and that we were presented with as we were working with a realtor was also suggested to us, or to me, by Commissioner Vanilla, and that's the parcel behind Cooper Ford. This was very appealing because it would allow us to pull some students. You know, as you head down 22, it's not far to the Sandhills Farm Life District. But as we got into it, we quickly kind of put that one on the back burner because of some wetlands that are there. You know, not only are wetlands hard to mitigate, but then there's the mitigations with the U.S. Army Corps, the giving back. If you use so much, you have to give back so much. And so that is a difficult process. And you can see that parcel there has a substantial amount of wetland. So we moved on, and the second parcel that we took a look at was behind Pizza Hut and Pete's. The only road frontage to this parcel is on 15501. Initially, we were told that we thought it could connect to Bass-Carthage Road. Unfortunately, if you look to the top left, you'll see a diagonal where the, in that parcel, Cindy, in the top left right there, the power line goes through. And so the electric line runs through there. It almost looks like a road, but it's a power line. That is connected in the back to Bass-Carthage Road. Unfortunately, there's a small little road there that goes between a church and some mobile homes. That is the electric company's access point, but the land itself does not join Bass-Carthage. Not only that, when you get to that point right there, it is a very low-lying area. When we walk through it, there's water standing there at the end. So that wouldn't be a point that we could, even if we could go through from Bass-Carthage. So that leaves us two points that are able to utilize on 15501. And when we take a look at those, the lowest point of road frontage, where you see that mouse circling right there, that road frontage is right exactly where you are exiting off of 15501. Unfortunately, because it's so close to that exit, that's just not somewhere we could position an ingress and egress. So that would leave us to go down to the road frontage there above that 15501 sign. That's where we would need to take school in and out. So that's where it would have to go. The 2024 numbers from DOT show us that an average of 13,187 cars pass by that road frontage daily. So there's quite a large amount of cars that go by. It would be a little bit more difficult to pull students from Sandhills Farm Life when capacity issues arise, but it's not impossible on that site. The biggest hurdle for this site is the fact that it's on 15501, and that's where we'd have to go in and out. The next site was one that we took a look at. It was also suggested by the Town of Carthage. This site is right on McNeil and Rockingham Street. If you look, the straight edge there on 22, that's McNeil, kind of near Terra Plantation there. If you look, go straight on up above the 22 sign, and you take a right, that's Rockingham Street where the school is currently located. The road frontage there is immediately when you turn off of Rockingham, and it is in that curve. You can, there's a parcel, if you go down to the bottom, Cindy, if you'll hover right here, that the town made us aware when they shared with us this week that potentially that could be purchased. It has a bit of road frontage that is on Pinehurst right there. That's about 38 yards of road frontage on that little parcel. So that would be enough that we could have emergency vehicles go in and out, and we could have maintenance vehicles, but it would not be enough for us to take school in and out. So realistically, if we're going to position something here, we would need to position the ingress and egress there on 22 coming down McNeil Street near Terra Plantation. 2024 numbers from DOT show where's 4,321 cars that pass by that road frontage daily. Now, although it's not impossible to build on, there is an 80-foot drop there. And what we have to realize when we have an 80-foot drop is that that's more site work. That's money that goes into the site. We don't have an infinite amount and won't have an infinite amount of resources. So the goal was to ensure that the majority of our resources go into the school itself and not into the site work. And it would be more difficult to pull from Sandhills Farm Life when capacity issues arise. That'd be pulling them all the way into proper town. So there are a few others that we looked at, but we quickly crossed them off. But I just wanted you to be aware of all of the things we looked at. There was across from the fairground, it was too far away to assist. That's actually 24, 27, and 501. At the end of McNeil Street here in Hillcrest, it was difficult topography. It was a little far away as well. Union Church Road, you already know what we have on Union Church Road with the three schools that are there. Union Pines, New Century, and New Covenant. And the only road frontage was there on Union Church. So we definitely didn't want to add to what we already have on Union Church. Even if we can get all the cars off the road on Union Church, there's still three schools that already exist right there. And this would have been placing a fourth right within that same amount of area. So we take a look at the next one. This was suggested at our board meeting, first of September, I think it was. And then the town shared this one with us as well. This is the Carthage Water Treatment Plant. There's road access on 15501 and also Bass-Carthage Road. The road access to keep us off of 15501, school ingress and egress would need to come out on Bass-Carthage. This is just about 1.8 miles from where the current parcel that was purchased is. So it's 1.8 miles towards town from the current parcel. And if we came out on 501, again, you have that large number of traffic. Instead, we'd want to come out on Bass-Carthage. On that property, there is a cell tower, and the cables do extend into the usable property. That's where I've circled right there in red. We just have to be aware that, you know, that is not usable area, and we'd have to stay away from that by code for a certain amount. There is a large eight-acre pond that's directly behind that property. Although, again, it's not impossible to build on this property. It does have a 70-foot drop, and that's from the road there towards the pond, and it would require extensive site work. And it is a little more difficult. It is more difficult to pull Sandhills Farm Life when capacity issues arise. It's just not quite as close to that area. And you know, what we have to think about, or what we were thinking about when we were taking a look is, you know, at this point in time, we're focusing on Carthage. But if we're utilizing this school as a county school for overall capacity, then we've got to think about the folks at Sandhills Farm Life when that comes time to move them as well. And think about how much are we expecting the shift? You know, how far are we expecting both groups to be willing to shift? And then we just received this parcel from the town, so thank you. This is a parcel on Needmore Road. If you, just to give you some reference, if you're thinking about coming from the north, you're coming from Midway and Northmore High School, and you're heading into Carthage, you've got Frank's there on the left, and then you've got Bobby's, the other store that's there on the left. Old Glendon Road turns immediately by Bobby's. And so when you turn on Old Glendon Road, you then enter the Needmore Community, and you would turn immediately to the right on the Needmore Road. That is a dead-end road. It's just outside the city limits, so it would require annexation. As the town shared with us, it would require some material negotiations with the land developer and the Town of Carthage. You all shared that there is some water pressure in that, issues in that area. So an engineering study would need to be done to identify water utility improvements. An installation of a lift station would be required. There's some potential downstream improvements that would be needed. Uh, as the town shared with us, it would require some material negotiations with the land developer and the Town of Carthage. Uh, you all shared that there is some water pressure in that, issues in that area, so an engineering study would need to be done to identify water utility improvements, an installation of a lift station would be required. There's some potential downstream improvements, um, that would be needed, so we've required engineer there. The acreage and the topography are suitable for building. So this is a relatively, you know, in terms of building, it's a relatively flat property, um, and the number of acres there would allow us to get things off of the road and is certainly big enough. When you think about DOT numbers, because this is a dead-end road, all the cars would come in and out of Old Glendon Road. And so that's right off of 24, 27. If you look at the number of cars that come right by Franks and Bobby's, that's an average of 8,545 cars a day. Um, so that's where we'd be coming out at. This location, although it's suitable for building because of the topography and the size, this would be something that our board and our Board of Commissioners would have to decide, you know, we're not going to worry about Vass Lakeview and Sand Hills Farm Life, um, because this location being that far to the north does not lend itself to addressing those capacity issues for those other schools. So what if we were, you know, if we were to choose this, although it's very buildable, there's a couple of things we'd need to make sure or realize and that would be, number one, we've got eight, over eight and a half, 8,500 cars coming out there every day where we're coming in and out. And number two, we'd all have to accept the fact that we're not going to address those overcrowding issues. We'll need to address those in another way. And so that would require more money in the future. Um, when we think about the current parcel that has been purchased, that was identified because we were not able to find parcels that really fit all of those parameters, those guiding principles that we're looking for. And so turned to GIS to kind of take a look at what's out there that would meet this and that would help us fit all of these pieces together. The owner of that parcel was contacted and was willing to sell, um, to give back to the community, was willing to have a school put there. It's about 30 acres. It would allow for a small IT building as well as a new Carthage Elementary School. When we think about how this fits into the newly adopted 2024 Land Use Plan, um, that's something that's been brought up quite a bit. And so if we look at Chapter Four of the Land Use Plan, it says, "Population growth remains the primary driver for the development of new schools and strategic school siting must be coordinated with land use, utility planning, and transportation infrastructure to ins- ensure that a new educational investment supports sustainable and balanced growth throughout the county." When we think about population growth, that was the primary driver. So that first piece right there was the primary driver in shifting our search towards that direction because that population growth and going out of capacity there at Vass Lakeview and needing to cascade those students from Vass to Sand Hills to Carthage was a primary driver. Prior to really looking deeply into this parcel, um, we reached out to land use planning and land use planning confirmed that yes, this is in RA zoning, which permits a school. And so that was one of the first things, you know, before we ever did anything else, reach out to land use plan and say, hey, take a look at this parcel number, is this a place that we could locate a school? And they confirmed, yes, it's already zoned RA, which does permit schools to be built. We then reached out to DOT, um, just to say, alright, can we take a look at the road frontage on this property? Can you come out, just walk it, I want you to lay your eyes on it, let us know, is this somewhere that we could have an ingress and egress for school? We want a separate bus entrance so that we're not backed up. So we gave them, you know, here's what we ideally need to ensure that we have traffic off the road and school runs smoothly. They went out, saw the, um, saw the site and reported back that yeah, looks like we should be able to bring school in and out of there with no problem. Utility planning, uh, showed that water line was only 700 feet away there at the Joel Crossroads. We would have to run a force main to utilize town sewer if we wanted to utilize town sewer. We do have the ability and I've worked with, um, folks to make sure that could happen. If we don't want to utilize town sewer, that doesn't have to happen. We can always do our own septic system. We still have one at West End there that's worked for 60 years. Uh, we can do our own septic system on that land. That was most recently done for a 600 student addition at Sand Hills Classical and it's a cost of around a half million dollars. So, um, a septic could be placed there on that to support the school. So when we look at the pros for that parcel as we headed into, you know, presenting this to our board, um, adequate acreage for the queuing. The 2024 numbers from DOT showed that 1,799 cars pass by that road frontage daily, which was significantly lower than the others that we had looked at. There's sufficient land to buffer the trees and, uh, the road and the adjoining parcels. It was excellent topography. There's only a 30-foot drop across that 30 acres, which means not bringing in dirt or taking out dirt, but just moving dirt around. Um, we can access county water there, so there's a potential to use that town sewer, but as I said, if that is not something that, uh, we can make happen, then we can put our own septic there for about a half million dollars. That is less than doing the force main, um, but it, it will require our folks to keep that up in the future and, and they do that currently at West End, so that could happen. Um, this parcel's only located 2.8 miles from the current school and it's three miles from Sand Hills Farm Life. And so that would help with that redistribution when needed if we're trying to save the taxpayers some money. When we look at how much it would cost to build on to Vass Lakeview today, if we were to just say, alright, today we need to expand that core and add on, the estimate was 10 to 12 million dollars. So that in five, 10 years will certainly go up. The cons of this parcel, as I shared with our board, is that if we are going to run a force main, that's about 3 million dollars. And, you know, a huge thank you to your folks there for helping us get an estimate from an engineer, um, and for letting us know that that COC station has recently been upgraded, so that would be a good option. Um, but we could negate that if we did a septic. We were aware of some environmental concerns at the Hall site and we did an extensive Phase Two, uh, study on the soil and the water and there were no environmental concerns present there with, at all. Why did this investment make sense? Well, the topography and, um, others were ruled out because of that topography and the traffic concerns. Uh, a new school on this selected parcel could offset that future growth, um, and save some taxpayer money. And while we were looking at the, you know, looking for the land, we talked about how can we exped-
Sure.
Sure. You ready? Gotcha. Okay. You just nod. You're welcome. So, uh, as I shared with you before, we wanted to expedite this process. Instead of finding the land and then putting out an RFQ for an architect, we wanted to do those simultaneously. So while the search for the land was ongoing, we were also working with the architect for, uh, the development of a new plan. In an effort to again, save money, we chose to utilize a prototype. That prototype had been built many times. Uh, I think at the time we chose Pinnacle, it was about eight times that that prototype had been built. We took the school improvement team and Principal Wilmes to that, or school improvement chair and Principal Wilmes to the most recent school that had been built, just to take a look and say, is this something that you feel comfortable, that you like, that you can envision being the new Carthage? And they were really excited by it. Um, we do have the ability to tweak that design, make it our own with brick selection, interior finishes, and all those final decisions are yet to be determined. Um, the school improvement team, uh, says will be presented, but they were presented with this and this coming Tuesday, we have Pinnacle coming back to our office to take a look at the final tweaks that the school improvement team felt needed to happen to the school to make it feel like their own. And once Pinnacle does that, we'll be able to bring that back. Uh, it's just a few things, uh, the way that, you know, plans for daycare, pre-K, those types of things. So at that point, then we'll bring those, uh, all that input to the Board Construction Committee and to the board as a whole before that plan is finalized and approved. So, you know, when could we have a final plan ready? Within two months, Pinnacle says we can have, after our board approves something, we could have the final ready. And here is a draft. Please note, this is in capital letters, it's a draft, right? So the outside of this building could change. It doesn't have to be these brick colors, it doesn't have to be this roof color. Um, some of these things will change certainly. So if we'll click there, if you'll go back Cindy and just click on that. That's okay. That's alright, it's the last one, the four questions right, right there, it just says linked here. That's okay. This just gives you a look at, um, the prototype school, what that looks like. Uh, if you look at that entrance there, that was one of the things that was suggested to have some changes, so that could change. As again, I told you, the roof color, the brick color, the catwalk out front, those are all things that could change. If you pull down and take a look at the floor plan for the school itself, this floor plan, although little tweaks are happening, um, this is the prototype floor plan and this is what it will be. It's one school under one roof with a main entrance for safety and security. You know, that's one of the biggest concerns we heard over and over, uh, from the Town of Carthage and from the school there is that, hey, we have seven buildings with little kids going between all the buildings. We'd really love for everybody to be under one roof, safe and secure. And so this is what we kind of call an E-model. Um, that front whole section is, uh, office, gym, cafeteria. One of the things we did do is make sure that this is not just an elementary gym, but this is a full-size regulation gym with hardwood floors, just as you currently have at that Carthage Elementary, because we do know that that gets utilized a lot by the community and a full-size gym is needed. So that was one of the things we had to change in the prototype that they've already done for us because it was just an elementary gym there. Um, but this is the draft floor plan. As I said, if you were to pull up the original and then pull this one up, they look very much the same. Uh, things that have changed are just, hey, can we get a door here, a door there, can we move, trade these offices, things of that nature. Um, but this is the overall plan, which is very exciting, um, and the staff gave us great feedback about. So, uh, again, this is a draft. The final will have to be approved by our board, once they review it. Um, and once we get the final brick selections and the roof selections and all that through everyone, that outside could look a little different, but it will be that E-floor plan, everybody under one roof. Alright, at this point, we're two questions and then open discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Purvis, for all that detail. It was very thorough and we'll just open up for questions for Ms. Purvis and Dr. Locklear. Remember, use your mic.
Okay. Um, I understand that when you start a meeting, you need to control, uh, the discussion. Um, however, the narrative, um, I see that as already discounting all of our options. Um, you started this conversation with saying, or your presentation by stating, "I'm going to cover what we discussed last time." And then you took every one of our options that we provided and told us what's wrong with it. Okay? And so that's, that right there is saying that they've already seen these options and it's already been determined that they're no good. Um, I think that's a poor way to start the conversation right now. Um, I understand that, yes, you did research, I appreciate the research, but you, you started off with saying, hey, this is what's factually happened and this is the first time any of this board has seen this. So we put work into these things and they were shut down right off the bat, as if though there was a factual problem with them without discussion with any of the board members. I'm very concerned when someone controls a narrative like that. We're here for conversation, we're here for questions, discussions, uh, but you put out a factual statement with no discussion. That's concerning.
Well, I understand that, sir, but what, the, the only parcel that our board has not seen prior to today is the Needmore property. That is the only one. Um, I showed that at our joint me- meeting with the Commissioners. I had that on the slides when we met with the Commissioners here. So I pulled that one up then. Nevertheless, as I acknowledged, we can build on those properties and that is what I said. It's not, I mean, it's not impossible. We can do it. I wanted to make you aware why they weren't chosen in the first place. That's why it wasn't the first choice. That doesn't mean it's impossible. Just as I shared, we could cascade students there. There were a couple of those, yep, we can cascade them, but it's not as easy. Certainly, we can build there, but it's not as easy. So I wanted, the goal, um, was to get you just to understand why we didn't initially pick that. That's not saying it can't be done, but this is why that wasn't the initial spot to place it. Now, just like the Needmore property, you know, I acknowledge, we acknowledge, you can certainly build there and it's great topography. It has great room. The only drawback is that everybody's going to have to understand that we can't utilize that really well for capacity because of the location of it. However, the only one that we really ruled out in that presentation that I would say, we just can't use that, is behind Cooper Ford, dealing with the ramifications of wetlands and the mitigations there. So, you know, I hate that it came across that way. What I was trying to show you is, you know, the question has come up, why did you rule this out? Why was this ruled out? And that's what I was trying to say is, here's why these weren't the first choices. It's not that we didn't look in this direction, here's why we didn't choose it and why it was ruled out. Not to say it's impossible, nothing's impossible, right? We can make it happen. It's just we have to be aware of all those factors of why it was ruled out.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was just, I was concerned the narrative kind of, it pigeonholed us right off the bat, so, but, but thank you very much. Um, so some of those properties, there's been, there's been modifications. Um, one of the, uh, one of the great things that we've done with the town is we have reached out to members of the town, private industry, we've talked to the, uh, the town, uh, services, what kind of utilities we can provide. Um, we've, we've received a lot of, a lot of assistance. Um, there are new things with the properties that you originally looked at that are now available, uh, because of our conversations. Uh, there are new ways to get in them, there are other properties adjoining that will be given or sold. Um, there are new options available and, and part of this right here is, is just the Town of Carthage talking to us. Um, we know our people and so when we spoke to them, um, it changed around a lot of the dynamics that you were facing right now when you, I've got people that'll donate land that'll let you in right behind Pete's, um, you know, right there on Vass-Carthage. Uh, these are the kind of things that, that through conversations, we can provide this assistance. Um, I did say this at the, the previous two meetings that I showed up, uh, to, and I said, hey, this is, this is something we can do if you work with us. Um, so what we did is we provided you the, the pictures, um, of, of the locations and, um, there really wasn't much of a conversation on it. Um, that's where we're having it right now. I want to have this conversation, I want to, I want to speak to my peers, um, I want to speak to the school board right now. Um, one of the, one of the issues I identified is that when, as an elected official, uh, we, we have this kind of weird dynamic. Um, we have the power, uh, however, we don't have the knowledge. Um, the staff have the knowledge, okay? And so what we have to do is we have to rely on the staff to provide information and the staff is essentially designed to protect the school board and any operations that are happening. What I identified is that through my conversations with Jenny Purvis, um, I was finding more protection on, on things than, than moving forward to find more opportunity. Um, and I, I said, alright, well, what I have to do is I have to speak to the elected officials, uh, because the elected officials will entertain opportunity, um, and, and staff by design is there to protect, uh, whatever they're running. Um, so that's, uh, that's part of the reason that we wanted to push for this forum right here, so that I could speak to the other elected officials and show which ways we can go forward. Uh, I know there's always going to be problems, there's always going to be some negatives, uh, to something, but I think just like this discussion, I feel like we front-loaded all the negatives, uh, without talking about many of the positives. Uh, the only positives I heard during that entire thing was, was effectively the site that you picked was perfect. Uh, not perfect, close to. Um, so what I want to do is I want to go back and discuss some of the other sites and talk about some of the pros that we've identified that, uh, that could be useful. And, and we recognize it's not going to be perfect either. Um, but we're, we're ready to talk about that.
Do you want to go back through the slides?
but I think just like this discussion, I feel like we front-loaded all the negatives, uh, without talking about many of the positives. Uh, the only positives I heard during that entire thing was, was effectively the site that you picked was perfect. Uh, not perfect, close to. Um, so what I want to do is I want to go back and discuss some of the other sites and talk about some of the pros that we've identified that, uh, that could be useful. And, and we recognize it's not gonna be perfect either. Um, but we're, we're ready to talk about that.
Do you want to go back through the slides?
I would, please, thank you.
We also linked, sorry Dan, we also linked yours. If you're more comfortable, didn't we link that Cindy? Yeah, we linked yours, Mr. Vanilla, so if you would rather pull up your slides that have the information, which is honestly what we thought would be, we'd be doing. We would talk to you about why we ruled these out, uh, why we went on to others and then you can share with us what you know. I will share with you all, and I think we all need to understand this, the goal here is a new Carthage Elementary. We have, I personally have no dog in the fight where Carthage Elementary goes, right? My goal, as I've shared to many of you, is that this community get a new school because they need it and they've been needing it. So I've pointed out to you what we as a team found with those properties. That's not to be an insult, it's to let you know, why did we not choose them? In an effort to try to get what we felt was the best. So that being said, please share what your information is, that's what we hoped you'd do.
Okay, thank you. Um, so...
No, sir, they were sent to, to us on Monday and we linked it to the, um, to the presentation today. Nothing has been yet because we, everything was being developed up to this meeting, so... That's why they're linked and being shared today, sir. Yes, yes, sir, they are. Many of the sites that we've discussed previously, yes, sir, you're seeing these for the first time. That's not the case, but we'll just, let's, let's let this move forward, yeah.
All right, it's on. Okay. All right, um, so, uh, I, I wanna, I wanna go ahead and put out that yes, we absolutely, uh, believe that Carthage Elementary needs to be replaced. It is, it is old, um, it is, it is requiring a lot of repairs. Um, so at no point during any of our conversation are we going to say, hey, we don't want a new elementary school. That's not what we're saying here. Um, the, the bottom line is that we are saying we want it in Carthage, simple. Um, and we've, we've tried to come up with some ways to, um, entice the school board to, uh, to think in that direction. Uh, we recognize that this is definitely within your bailiwick, um, this is, this is what you have to decide on. Um, you have the authority on this thing, um, and if you build it outside of Carthage, um, Carthage can't stop you from doing that. Okay, um, we recognize that. So, uh, this is really just to provide options and, and hopefully we can work in, in ways that will, you know, lower cost and, and, and still function. Um, so all we can do, uh, there's no punitive action that this board can, can provide to force you into a direction, uh, but what we can do is we can provide rewards to move towards Carthage. So that's, that's all we can do. All right, uh, next slide please. Okay, um, we're gonna kind of cruise through these things. If someone would like to look at mine, um, I'm fine with that? Um, so there are some, uh, some breakdowns of the utility lines. Uh, I can't remember the entire legend, so I apologize. Uh, so if you want to see the packets, um, here are the packets and they will show, uh, where we currently have utility lines ready to go. All right, if we could, um, go to the next view, please, please, thank you. Okay, so this is the, uh, this is the water tower land with Carthage. Um, we recognize that, okay, topography-wise, it's, uh, it wasn't that great, however, it was something that we had, um, Carthage owned. And, um, and we had a little bit of space right there and so, uh, when we found out that, uh, Carthage Elementary was scheduled to be built outside of Carthage, uh, you know, we were, we were really kind of on the back foot there. We didn't have, uh, much wherewithal, the, the land was already under contract. Um, this is the one plot of land that we do own, that the town owns and, um, and so it was, uh, it was brought up for consideration. Now, it is off of a Vast Carthage Road. Um, you know, one of the things that we have going on with this right here is that it's right across the street from Carthage Police Department. Um, so we have, uh, we have security right there. Um, one of the other things I'd like to point out with all of these right now is that, um, we can provide Carthage Police Department support. Uh, we currently do that right now, um, that is at no cost to the school board. Uh, the town of Carthage, uh, we, we pay the officers, they come in, they run traffic, um, both for, um, both for pickup and, um, and... Departure, drop-off. Uh, yep, so, so we're, we're doing that right now and we do that just because, hey, we care about our, our students in Carthage and we're providing that free service. So, um, yeah, the, the, the water tower, we were told at the time that, hey, the topography's not that great, but it was an option, so we went ahead and we provided it as an option right here because we, the town, own this right now and so we can work with this. Um, benefit to this is you're not getting, you're not gonna get any closer to clean water. Um, it is right there, the pipes would go straight from a water plant into the school. Um, there, there seems to be this notion around that we have poor water quality, we do not. Um, we haven't had any infractions in the last 12 years, 10 years. Uh, in fact, we're, we're, I think, on our fourth straight year of awards, uh, right now for our water quality. Uh, we did at one point have some of the worst water quality in the state. Um, and that really pushed us to clean up. And so we put a lot of money and we're still putting money into our water purification system. So we are, uh, we are on the top tiers of water quality within the state right now. So the problem is when you have water quality, um, as bad as we had, for as long as we had, that goes on. But that is not factual anymore, uh, it hasn't been for at least a decade. Uh, but yep, you would get, um, you would get clean water right there. Um, can we go to the next one? All right, this one right here is currently under contract. Uh, the individual that's under contract has agreed that he would sell a 30-acre parcel to it. Uh, we did discuss, um, and the 30-acre parcel would actually be less than the sewer line alone for, uh, for your current location. Um, and so then you would have water and sewer and, uh, fiber for the IT department, uh, which you don't have any of those out at the location that you've, you've selected right now. Um, you are also still across the street from Carthage Police Department. And, um, we have had a citizen that has agreed to, um, donate one of the southern lots on that property that would give direct access to Vast Carthage Road. Uh, the county also owns the property directly north of that, that plot right there. And if we can work with them, uh, there is an opportunity to connect to Pete Kelly Road, uh, to the north of it. Um, and there is also the opportunity to connect to, uh, the county property by the social services. I don't know that road name right there, but it's over by the, uh, Carriage Oaks Drive, okay. So that's owned by the county. So right there, we have, uh, two, two entryways on that property that, uh, that could take you off the main road, 15501. Okay, that's the majority on that one, if we can go to the next. Okay, so this one, um, this is on the, in a Needmore. Uh, this one does have, uh, water pressure problems.
I'm sorry, Dan, can I interrupt, just one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
For this Southbury property, which plot or plots were you looking at for Vast Carthage Road to possibly?
Oh, can we, can we spell on it?
I just want to make sure I mark it on my map.
Um, yeah, funny enough, uh, the same owner owns all of them. So, um, yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be, uh, choose one and so, um, we would work with that. There's also another lot that's for sale, it, I think it's the one right where the, the point comes out on the southwestern corner. Um, you see that little sharpness right there? That, that property was for sale by owner as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Question too. Um, so I'm looking on the Moore County GIS, in case anyone is wondering what I'm doing on my phone. And yeah, the first site was obviously terrain, you know, a lot of sloping terrain. Uh, this according, this looks like it has decent terrain. There was no objection to the train on this, right? That was?
There's no objection to the terrain. The only reason the team discounted this one was the inability to come out anywhere besides 15501. And Mr. Vanilla's check, you know, sharing other options now. Those were not things that, um, the Realtor and my team brought to us as options, but only 15501. And for that reason, that was the reason.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, yeah, that, uh, unfortunately locals know the area a little bit better and so, well, not unfortunately, but locals do know the area a little bit better and so when it comes down to making these kind of deals, it, uh, there were additional options open to us through conversation.
It's to your point, it's why we have a discussion, because we learned stuff that we didn't know and therefore something becomes viable that we considered unviable. That's exactly why we should have these conversations, elected officials to elected officials.
Ms. Purvis, our Realtor was local, wasn't he?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Our Realtor was local?
Yes, ma'am, he lives, uh, I think Niagara Carthage Road. He is local to the county.
I thought that was the case, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wonder why he didn't dig up these possibilities? I mean, that's the obvious question to that.
Well, I'm not, uh, I, different, different connections, different networks, um, different, different friend circles, um, that, that just happens. Um, I, as I, as I show these things, uh, one thing, one thing I'm not going to, um, cast any, any shade on is that I think Ms. Purvis did a phenomenal job, um, with the information that she had. Um, yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's been good. Um, I just have more information right now, uh, so that's, that's it. Okay, um, all right, this one right here, uh, this 90 acres, um, so the GIS shows the, um, the western plot, but there's a big X on it showing that that has already been sold, so it is no longer available. Uh, this one, I reached out to private industry and I spoke to, uh, spoke to someone and, uh, he agreed to purchase it. And he agreed to cut 30 acres out of the center of it, uh, which is the flattest spot, which ironically is actually flatter than the, the spot that you guys found. Um, and he will donate it for free to Carthage Elementary. That's a big thing. Um, and then while we do have low water pressure, um, because, well, not low water pressure, we have small water lines out there. Um, prior to any of this stuff even being a thing, uh, we had already, um, allocated funds, uh, for a water upgrade. So we had an $8 million water upgrade to our, our water purification system and this specific neighborhood is getting 2 million of that already just to increase the pipe size. Uh, so this one has, uh, sewer and water and fiber to it and it's free. So it's a, it's a pretty big win.
And for reference, where is this located?
Uh, this is north of, uh, north of Needmore.
In the sharp curve off of 2427, if you're going toward Northmore, is that correct?
Is that Ivy's, is that Ivy's, uh, gas station or garage there? Okay, so this is west of town a bit?
Yep, northwest, the northwest corner, um...
So it's along 20, it's Ivy's service station?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I'm doing.
Uh, we are currently working with, um, with a couple other sites to secure, uh, an entrance over to, um, Old Glendon Road as well. So that would be a high, sorry, sorry, Glendon Carthage, my bad, it's already got Old Glendon Road. Uh, Glendon Carthage Road as a, uh, high-speed avenue of approach. Uh, so that was something that we're, we're trying to do right now. However, um, with the timeline, uh, I, I want to say all this stuff came to fruition in, in what, like, two weeks? Two weeks, all this stuff happened, so, um, certain people are not answering their phones, uh, so we can't get that. I'm sure that's the same problem that, that you, you dealt with. Um, but we do have a couple options to provide a, uh, high-speed avenue of approach to that. So, you know, there's, there's some, some good things with that. All right, any questions? Okay, so we did talk about this right here. Um, this one is, uh, centered on Carthage. Uh, it, it's, it's kind of in the heart in Carthage, it's actually just south of Carthage Elementary right now. In fact, I think, um, I think if you ran really hard, you could probably get to it in two minutes, uh, from the current Carthage Elementary. Um, this one does have the topography issues, um, but it is available, it's in the center of town. Um, the individual that has this is willing to sell. So, uh, one of the things that we provided, we did find multiple other sites and we, we asked questions, um, about them. Um, some people, you know, we, we did the topography thing, we, we checked on, on, um, on the traffic, uh, what we, what we felt could be, um, suitable. The, yeah, the, the problem is, some of them just, they don't want to sell or they don't want it, they don't answer the phone. So, you know, what we did is instead of kind of just, I didn't want to just toss things in front of you and say, hey, look, there's 30 acres, good luck, um, because then what we're not doing is we're not providing you an option. Uh, so all these are real options right now. Um, they will either be sold or given to you for free. Um, and then every one of these, um, would come with, uh, Carthage Police Department assisting with, uh, with drop-off and, um, I did it again, pickup, yep, drop-off and pickup, um, so you're gonna have assistance with that. Um, you're going to have water, we're gonna have water services there, you're gonna have sewer, uh, town sewer services, access, access to fiber. Um, it's already there, we've, we've got two fiber companies operating in Carthage, three now, oh, we got three now. Um, and so we, we looked at, okay, what kind of compromise can we do? Originally, we had a small school and so, you know, we, we wanted a small school, we like a small school. Uh, but we looked at, what are your objectives? And so we tried to look at things from, through your eyes or, or behind, you know, whatever you've been, you've been charged with. You have a specific, uh, mission set you have to meet. And the big thing that we came up with is that you are attempting to build a, um, an overflow school, if, if you will. Um, you're trying to shift other students into it, so you need a certain size. And so we said, all right, well, Carthage Elementary, um, you're not likely going to get that size out of that plot of land. We recognize that, um, it would be, it would probably be, um, not absurd, but it, it wouldn't be very polite to say, hey, just replace this thing, especially knowing that you have your own requirements. Uh, so we looked at this and we said, all right, well, how can you build a larger facility? So that's why we started looking at larger plots of land. Um, so that was kind of the thing we were trying to do is that if you can come to Carthage, we will get you a larger plot of land so that you can have a larger school so that you can flex students into that school if need be. Uh, we recognize that there is a certain distance, um, thing there. It's, uh, I think it was a, it could be from two to, to five miles, I believe. Um, but we also recognize that you have within your control the ability to change district, uh, the actual school districts. Uh, so you guys can flex however you see fit, that, that's within, uh, your purview and your authority to do. Um, so, you know, building a school off of a district, we already changed districts, we can do it again. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was, I have a question on the, on the potential for school reassignment and I was gonna tell while you were talking about this, Dan, if we could pull up the, uh, the school assignment map, because I have some questions or I need to think about the whole, you know, s- um, Farm Hill, Sand Hills Farm Life School and all that. I think it'd be helpful to see the, uh, the attendance maps. The attendance area is, is on the right, is the one that's highlighted on the right. Can you walk me through or walk us through the other schools and their attendance areas there? The, the, there's Sand Hills Farm Life and then the other one?
Thank you. Sand Hills Farm Life is that Carolina blue there. Can we make that bigger Cindy so we can blow up the legend?
I think we can all, I mean, I can see it. Here, here's what I don't understand, why they're pulling that up. Um, so you're saying Sand Hills Farm Life is at its core capacity? So you're saying Sand Hills Farm Life is at its core capacity, it's already built out to its core capacity? So there's no expanding that without a huge expense?
Right, and so the point of that was that Sand Hills Farm Life, if we were to move students from VAS to Sand Hills Farm Life, they don't have the room either to expand. So moving them to Sand Hills Farm Life wouldn't be the answer, adding there, without moving some of those Sand Hills Farm Life students shifting.
Well, that was my next question, is let's look at Sand Hills Farm Life, let's look at Vass Lakeview and then, so I just want to see those three and then list it while we discuss it.
Yeah, so just kind of shifting the lines when you all decide to redistrict, shifting those lines.
I have, I want to see it and make sure I understand it, because every time that's been presented, right, and I've heard you say it a couple times, right? But every single time, I've always thought it's kind of a distinction without a difference because we can reassign students at any time, right? But you know, if you look at Sand Hills Farm Life, it's on the far left of that district. So you know, there's questions, where's the growth coming from? I just want to make sure that I understand and therefore everybody understands why this is an issue, because it seems like not an issue to me.
So if you're looking at the Sand Hills Farm Life District, if you, oops, that's okay. Scroll up a little bit. So Carthage is in green and you see Sand Hills Farm Life and Vass Lakeview, okay? And that helps you understand when you're moving from Vass Lakeview to Sand Hills Farm Life and then you, when our board decides to redistrict, that Sand Hills Farm Life would push in towards Carthage. So you're looking to be able to stay, you know, somewhat from Carthage towards this direction if you don't want to push those lines too very far and have another issue in terms of people saying, well, you're moving us this far, right? And that's something the board can, has to decide on.
We're going to have to back up, because I still don't understand. So let's just get blocking and tackling first. So Vass Lakeview is at core capacity, it's built out to its core capacity. Okay, and Sand Hills Farm Life is built out to its core capacity? So both of those are built out to its core capacity and they're projected to be full, right? Okay, so. Wait, wait, I don't, I still don't understand, so if you, can you say that again? Again, I don't.
So Vass Lakeview, there's the whole area. Vass Lakeview is currently at its core capacity. When it reaches that, we can't add much, because most of the buildings.
Understand, it's built, it's built, it's built out to its core capacity.
That's right. So when we have an overflow of students there, lines would be, need to be redone or would have to address to redistrict. And this Vass Lakeview attendance area would shrink back this way and some of this area would need to be taken in by Sand Hills Farm Life.
Okay.
To take in some of these students, right?
Maybe.
That means, I'm just saying, this is what would happen if you were cascading this way. Sand Hills Farm Life, that attendance area, Carthage would need to take over that so that some of these students, they're going to attend Carthage.
Okay, but if we.
That's what you're talking about, you're cascading the boats.
Can we scroll down a little bit, Cindy? So, I can approach four.
Sure.
No, I'm sorry, scroll. Here's my question again, I'm just trying to get this straight right there. So, so right now, we're looking at putting the school here. Because we might in the future shift this down. And it's just, right? But from here to here, which is a potential side, these students would still be going west of the distance than these students from here to here. So we're planning for something that may or may not happen the way that we envisioned it happening. But even if it does, you know, we're reassigning it to the way you stated it might. Even if so, then we're looking at, okay, somewhere over here, this moves down and then these students attend a school here or attend a school here, but it's still less business than the student who goes here or lives here in the central school. It's still kind of secondary, in other words, we're not building a school here, the alternate side isn't here and it's not here, it's still within, actually, it's kind of more in the middle of that street than this school.
There's a million different ways to do it, but it's plain what the thought process is.
Understand, understand, and I never really understood it and so I understand. I feel, I should have thought, oh, okay, so these students have to go to here instead of here, well, that's still better than being in this family of here, it's left, come all the way down here.
And we utilize that the majority of students are not coming from Central, they are coming from. I will say, we did have some questions about McDees, because I think in our previous meeting, we said that McDees was supposed to take over that Avis Round and Avis Road. Right now, McDees is at about seven hundred and forty and they were built for eight hundred. But they have, they also house our Blend Ed program. And so that has kind of quickly filled up. So, you know, that was thought to be what could handle overflow of Sand Hills Farm Life and Vass, but it's filled up. I mean, we're within sixty of filling up, so just, you know, to answer that question, because we were asked that.
Wait, wait, so Blend Ed, which could really be anywhere, Blend Ed occupying McDees Creek is the reason, is going, so Blend Ed, which could be, again, located anywhere, occupying McDees Creek is going to drive the elimination of a free alternative, is going to eliminate consideration of a free alternative school site because Blend Ed is in McDees Creek, which was previously identified as the overflow from Vass Lakeview?
It does house classrooms there.
Okay, so A, we could move Blend Ed. B, it kind of points out the futile, futility of pointing out the cascading effect, because, well, we put it here because of this cascading effect when we just said, well, we had this plan to expand into McDees Creek, but then that just got canceled somewhere along the way.
It didn't get canceled, McDees Creek was built to capacity of eight hundred students.
It got filled up because Blend Ed went there, but originally it was going to be overflow from.
Well, it was, we redistricted students in Vass Lakeview at that time. We also redistricted students that were attending Sand Hills Farm Life, a significant amount, because Sand Hills Farm Life was significantly over capacity and those students were reassigned to the new McDees Creek. So it did address capacity issues at that time. What Ms. Purvis is saying is as over time, since that school's open, it's now reaching its capacity because of growth. Blend Ed is a, Blend Ed is a program that's there, Blend Ed's been a successful program. We do have three sites that it's currently at, McDees Creek and West Pine Elementary and Southern Pines Elementary. So you do kind of have to have a regional site, but that's why it's at that point and why we now, when working with the board and work with the industry, we're looking at that cascading effect and building a new elementary school would be an opportunity, cost-effective opportunity to potentially address it. With that said, as Ms. Purvis said, I'll echo her words, our desired outcome, and I think in general, is we really do need a new elementary school. So if there's a different path that our board and working with commissioners, working with the town takes on a piece of property, that's where we go. But at this point, we wanted to make sure we had all the facts on the table.
So if we're looking, since we're discussing, if we're looking at that Needmore property, because in all honesty, you know, if we're looking at what's most buildable without spending a lot of money on site work and road frontage in terms of coming in and out, that's the most desirable. But what our board and everyone would have to agree on, if we're going to put it that far, I mean, we can, you have to think about a couple of things. The board would need to think about, are we good pushing Sand Hills Farm Life students that far in the future? If so, okay. If not, and you feel like that's a little too far northwest to push Sand Hills Farm Life, then we don't need a school for six hundred. Because we, if we're not going to utilize capacity for Sand Hills Farm Life, Vass overflow, we need to back this school down to a four or a four fifty, which, as Dr. Lockler said, our desire is just to get a new school, that can be done. But we have to do that, the board would have to do that with the realization, if we want to back that down to a four hundred, then the board's going to have to understand and be committed that in the future, we'll have to address that capacity issue that's going to happen at Vass. And so we'll have to address that in some way if you choose not to shift kids that far. Does that make sense, just giving you all the options? And you can choose those properties that are in between, but they're not quite as buildable as that Needmore property.
The only, you know, you asked if we agreed, you asked if that makes sense. The only thing I would change is regardless of the current need, if we built a new, if we didn't have a two-school solution, you know, assuming we didn't do a two-school solution, if we're building a new school, the only thing I would say is that the core capacity is going to be six hundred, whether we need it now or not.
Right, but build out the classrooms to four or four fifty. We would not need to build out the classrooms, you know, if we're building this school right now and we're going to utilize it for overflow of Vass and Sand Hills Farm Life, my recommendation, the recommendation of the team would be, go ahead and build out those six hundred classrooms because in just a few years, after you get it built, you're going to need to add on. An economy of scale says, we're better off to add those classrooms while we're doing it rather than go back and prep again and add them on. But if we were going to build in a place that you don't anticipate pulling other students into, we'd build the core, but we'd only build those classrooms out to about four hundred.
Any other questions or, Mr. Vanilla?
Yes ma'am. All right, so a couple considerations since we're talking about the Needmore property right now. Carthage has future plans right now for a Carthage bypass. The bypass is going to, it's currently slated to run north of Carthage. We do have a problem, we have a, we have a traffic circle. I mean, the county, the historic county, where the county commissioners meet, you know, it's constantly being passed by chicken trucks, log trucks, all that kind of stuff. We recognize that in the future, we will have to have a bypass to run all that, all those kind of trucks through. We do already have a plan and that plan goes over the northern part of Carthage and that would be adjacent to the Needmore property. So that's another high-speed avenue of approach. It's not right now, that's something that the town of Carthage would have to work with NC DOT. Yeah, I'll go on my little tirade right now. So Carthage is in a unique solution, or solution, position. We, the town of Carthage, we run the municipality, okay? We don't own our main roads, those are owned by the state. We don't own the center of our town, that's owned by the county. This board is in Carthage and we don't run this either. We support all these different entities. We provide water, we provide sewer to this right here, we do the same thing. Anytime there's a problem at the courthouse, it's our fire department that shows up. We have to ask permission from the state to shut down our main road for parades. We're very used to having to ask permission to operate in our own backyard. One of the things that I'm asking for right now is that, you know, we saw that, and this is going onto Carthage Elementary, we saw Carthage Elementary leaving our town and we are now asking permission to keep our school, okay? We want our school because an elementary school is a community focal point. It's something that the, you know, families expect to have nearby. We have done a lot as a town to attract young families. We have worked very hard to be a safe area. And one of the things that people come for is, hey, it's a small-town Phil, we have the elementary school right here, they can take their kids to school right there, it's local. This is something that we recognize there's growth coming. If we have growth that are young families that are coming in, hey, that's even better for the town. We want that. We recognize that schools have longevity, just as you said. Hey, a school is fifty years, that's how long you designed the building to last, but the reality is that it will probably last even longer than that on the land. We will, as we should, we will stretch every dollar and try and get this to go as long as possible and then potentially even rebuild on the same site. So we recognize that if we lose Carthage Elementary, we are going to lose something crucial to our town. And so that's why we are effectively petitioning you right now with options. We know we're on the, we're on the, we don't have authority in this thing, but we're projecting what our thought process is here. Yeah, that's, you know, we have some other benefits here, being the county seat. So in addition to having, you know, all these other organizations and governments here, there are some perks to it. For instance, the sheriff's department is in town. You know, when you talk about, okay, the danger of the children, I know right now that, hey, the SRO is a hot topic as well. You're not going to get any closer to the sheriff's department than Carthage, okay? Especially downtown Carthage, we have the sheriff's department, we have the county SWAT team, we have, they have drones, they have a lot of capability to deal with the dangers of this modern age. And currently, the Carthage Elementary is sandwiched between them and the Carthage Police Department. You're probably not going to get a faster response time with the amount of power that we have in this area. So when you move them out of Carthage, you are distancing yourself from those services. We also have the fire department there. There's, there are perks to staying inside of Carthage. We have, we have an emotional attachment to the school, we have reasons for it. And I believe that we have provided you as many options as we can provide to incentivize you to choose to build inside of Carthage. But that's about what I got here. So if you've got any questions, I welcome them.
Dan, have you heard anything from the neighbors against any of these?
No, no. I believe that there will probably be some opposition, there is always opposition. Anyone that lives anywhere doesn't want any change near them, that's expected. I recognize that. This is something that we provided to you. We attempted not to, so part of the fact-finding on this was to first find them and then not drive up the prices. So the conversations that have been, that we've already done with these property owners, this was done with the intent to be able to hand the keys over to you and say, continue driving this thing if you so choose. If we start pushing all this stuff out before the conversations have had or you've even said, hey, I'm even interested in this thing, you're effectively trying to sabotage yourself prior to a decision even being made. So yes, I do expect anybody that, I mean, if someone said, hey, I'm going to build a hotel behind your house or I want to build a school, like, if someone wanted to build a school right behind my house, I would say, well, I have trees right now, I could have construction equipment for two years. You're always, there's always going to be a negative to something like that. And yes, we do anticipate that. But we recognize that as a town, this is better for the town as a whole. And so just as you are tasked with maintaining the schools, we are tasked with maintaining the town. And so we look at the town holistically and we see this of greater benefit to the town than any sort of, any detriment that it would cause.
I would just add to both boards, you know, we say and we hear lots of times folks say, hey, we're looking at a fifty-year investment, right? But both boards really need to realize, this is a hundred years. I mean, you think about Carthage Elementary, it's been there over seventy years. So, you know, fifty years flies by, how well I know. But, you know, when you all are deciding where this ultimately goes and where you want us to build it, this is way beyond a fifty year because we see how long Carthage has been there, we see how long in Pines and Northmore and Pinecrest and West End, we see how long these schools have been there. And so the decision is one that will be far-reaching, way past any of us. And, you know, that's just one thing we've got to realize, it's not a fifty-year school. It's, and our schools are well-maintained, that's one of the things that folks say a lot. You know, they go in our schools and they go, man, this doesn't look like it's been here sixty years or seventy years. So kudos to our folks who helped maintain that, but this is a, you know, a hundred-year investment. this is a, you know, 100-year investment. So it's a good deal.
Can I just say something? Yeah, I agree. I agree with everything you're saying, Jenny, but we've had people in here that were against the location of the school that are six generations. So yeah, it's 50 years, it's 100 years, but it's also a whole lot of generations of families.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just saying, as we look forward to, as Dan is talking about road changes and things of that nature that you might have planned, that's something we wanna think about when we think about that many years down the road.
The town of Carthage has been operating since 1796. So, yeah, we plan on being around for a while longer.
Choosing locations, that's something we wanna think about, right? As you mentioned, the bypass, you know, if those things are coming, those are things we need to take into consideration, right?
And I think one thing to take into consideration as well is that if you look at the county's land use plan, it really contemplates a lot of low-density or more agricultural and agarian components of the county system, which would essentially be where Sand Hill's farm life is, if you look at that, and then the municipality, which is West Palm Pines. They're not planning for a lot of growth. Most of the growth is gonna be centered around the municipalities, including Carthage. I mean, we have an infill process where, right now, I think we have two or three residential communities that are coming. The homes there are very affordable, which means younger families, younger kids, more influx of children for the elementary school. And so I think part of the planning for 10 years, 20 years, 50 years is gonna be, a lot of the growth is going to be centered around the municipalities, including Carthage. So I think if you don't look at it from that angle, my opinion, then I think, you know, five or 10 years from now, you're gonna have another discussion that we have to either build trailers, modulars, or add-ons to certain schools because of the influx. So I believe that the trend is going to be around certain municipalities. You're gonna have influx of people, and those people have children. And what we see in Carthage right now is a lot of young families with a lot of young children moving in. And so it wouldn't surprise me that in five years, that school's filled capacity just with Carthage alone. So I would just like to point that out because I think that's kind of where we're heading.
Thank you, sir.
I've got a question. Y'all have been talking about the school lasting 50 years. Why, Carthage Elementary is 69 years old.
Yes, sir.
Why hadn't something been done a long time before now?
I can't answer that, sir. I got here about two and a half years ago, but I do agree that something should have been done. It is time, and it's past time. So that's one of the things we'd like to put our foot on the pedal and make happen. And that's what I shared with you all. You know, I am not gonna die on the hill of where this goes. What I would die on the hill is they need one.
Well, looking forward, it sounds like there needs to be a lot of, a lot better long-range planning for anticipated growth in Moore County. Because I went to that, I went to that school when it opened, the year it opened, and that was 69 years ago. I'm getting ready to think I'm old. But it seems to me like folks that come after y'all, or you that are here now, need to be doing some really long-range planning as far as growth in Moore County because if you get out, I bumped into a lot of folks that have moved here from other parts of the nation. And there's a lot of good things about North Carolina as a whole. I met this guy when I was in the eastern part of the state. He moved to North Carolina from Maryland. He said when his property tax got bigger than his mortgage, he figured it's time to move. So there's a lot of things that will cause folks to move to North Carolina, and particularly our area, because it's a good area to live.
Yeah. Dan, I apologize if I've missed it. Were your options presented in priority? Any particular priority?
No, they weren't. This, we recognize that we don't have, we don't have a say. This is definitely, definitely where you want to set up. Yeah, so we, we put them out there as all options on the table. Like I said, the priority for us is that it be built in Carthage.
I think as we rack and stack these options, all the options, I think it'd be very helpful if we knew what your priorities were on those.
Okay, absolutely.
That'd be helpful.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
And there will be some prices on some of them. And so that's something that, the only one that we can give you for free is the need more one. The rest of them would cost. So.
Can I verify, I'm sorry, is the need more parcel number three Jordan to land?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yep, so that was something that I felt if you're gonna discuss finances and stuff, that would probably be a closed session thing simply because you're negotiating purchases. But I think that that is going to weigh pretty heavily in your decision. So, yep, we can provide that to you so you can negotiate with whoever owns the property right now.
Dan, what about the water treatment plant? Is there a price on that one? Or since the town owns that one, is it as need more?
We have not discussed that thoroughly because the, we kind of got the thumbs down on the topography thing, but because it is one of the, one of the few properties that we own with that kind of, that kind of land, we threw it back up there because it's what we can give right now.
Sure, sure.
I think we're, I think we're at course of action analysis stage. And I think a description of the course of action for each of these options that you prioritize will be extremely helpful because we gotta bounce those against criteria. And I think our joint criteria needs to be developed for that in order to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if we're ready to do COAs right now, if you wanna.
That may take some time.
He's got some of the details on the, I've noticed.
But nothing that would constitute a course of action.
Right, I got you.
So we need to develop that pretty shortly, I think, after this.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, and I appreciate.
And I'm not trying to make any decisions here. We're just making.
Nope. All I'm really asking is, all we're asking right now is for you to, to give serious consideration towards building in Carthage. That's, that's what we're going for.
One of the things I would just share with both boards as I'm sitting here thinking about is you both know that our commissioners are looking to place this on the bond in 2026. And so my goal is to have enough information to be able to place this on the bond because I've got to be able to provide them with information that lets them know how much we're expecting this to be so it can be placed on the bond. So, you know, there is a little bit of urgency that needs to happen between the boards, whether we build it here or there or yonder. I can get the architectural plan, the floor plan finalized, but until we know exactly where that site is going to be, we can't get a final site plan. We can't get the engineer in there to tell us all, you know, look at the elevations and all that final plan that would come into that price. And so, you know, I just share that because I need both boards to know the urgency behind us getting enough information to the point that we can provide the commissioners what they need to put this on the bond because we certainly don't want to miss that and have to wait till the next one, right?
Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
Thinking back to that commissioner meeting where they had that bond person present, and I'm not disagreeing with a sense of urgency. We have a sense of urgency on this, right? No doubt about it. But just a point of clarification, what level of detail do they need to, in January, February, to put forth the bond? The location doesn't have to be finalized, does it?
The location does not have to be finalized, but the topography of a location, the ingress, egress, the way that you've planned that, that can really affect the price of something and the plan for the school. And so if we know this is gonna be on a relatively 30-foot drop across, 20-foot drop across, then yes, you can get a general price. If we know this is gonna be on a spot that's gonna have an 80-foot drop, then we can get a general price. We don't have to be specific, but what we can't do is say, well, we don't know where it's gonna go, and then we end up needing $6 million or $8 million more dollars for something. We wanna ensure that we at least have the general idea of we've narrowed it down to these.
Yeah, so we can properly frame the cost. We just have to know the magnitude of the construction is what we need.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, the higher fidelity we have, the better.
Correct.
Okay.
I would.
Oh, yeah, do you want to say?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna move on to the next item, but if you have something you wanna add.
Yep. So what we did here right now is, out of these, out of these options, there is a sure shot. That is, that is need more. That's already been promised. So if you wanted that, hey, we could go ahead. We could start up negotiations or at least the handshake, anything that needs to happen. The remainder, they would, that would, that would be a financial negotiation that would have to take place. I have made it clear to everyone that's helped out with this, which I've been very thankful that we've received as much assistance as we have throughout this, that we have a short burn on us. I was there at the, at the bond meeting, and they pointed out, hey, we have to get this stuff in by January if it's gonna be on the ballot for the, for the following election. So all of these options were developed with that in mind. So these are, these are all ready to go, and they should be available before the bond, the bond has to be turned in for the next year's election. So a lot of this stuff has been considered prior to.
Dan, I appreciate and understand not giving specifics here today when we talk about negotiations and prices. But we, I do note, it says the need more property would require material negotiations with the land developer and the town. Is that something when you provide us with more in-depth information privately that you could give me a little more information or give us a little more information into exactly what you mean by that and what that would look like?
I can do it right now.
Okay.
All right. So the developer has agreed to give you the land, and the developer wishes to develop around the land later on. The concern with the developer is that they are going to have to build out your infrastructure along the way. And so what was requested is if you could front-load your infrastructure construction, that way they wouldn't have to, so for instance, if, let's say your sewage line, your water lines go up one-third of the property, well, if he has to build at the top of the property, then he has to build your infrastructure as well. And so he will have to incur that cost in order to build at the northern part. So what he has asked is that if you accept the land, you just build your portion of the utilities, and then he can just tap in at the northern part. And, you know, he'll build out the southern part. He just doesn't wanna give the land and then have to build all your utilities too. That's, that's all he's asking.
Understood. Thank you.
Let me ask you this. Will the town, and maybe you gotta vote on it or something, but will the town of Carthage get the utilities to the property boundary if they're not already there?
They're already there.
Okay.
All right, here in.
And just to be clear, that sewer, water, and fiber, right?
That is, that is sewer and water. We don't do fiber, but the, the actual companies that provide that, they already have fiber out there.
All right, I just, sorry, I'll move on quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On that same property, you said the, you're planning out or in the future a bypass? Would that run along, you said that's the northern end of that property?
It's close to the northern end of that property. I don't have the bypass in front of me right now. So what we have is we have a forecasted bypass. And that is something that we provide to NC DOT. When NC DOT prioritizes that, then we'll see it. But, yeah, right now, we, we can't afford to build that ourselves.
Well, I just, before we move on to the next topic, I just want to thank you guys. And I know, I'm sure Dr. Locklear was about to say the same thing, but thank you for all the additional information. This is really good to have. I'm a driver and seer kind of guy, so I'm gonna drive out and take a look at these and get my own thoughts on, but this has been really helpful. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And thank you, Mr. Benello. A lot of hard work there. And we'll have board comments at the very end, too. So, but let's move on to item B, update on New Century Middle School Pump Station. Dr. Locklear and Ms. Purvis.
Go ahead, Ms. Purvis.
All right. So this New Century Lift Station has been a thorn in our side, and I know it's been a thorn in yours as well, because you've received phone calls. So I wanted to give you a little background of where we are, how we got to where we are and where we are. So that New Century Lift Station was updated with monies from ESER. So when we received those COVID relief funds, that's when we began to look at updating High Falls and New Century. It was at a cost of about $309,000 per school. So we have a little over $300,000 in that new lift station. LKC engineered that job. They oversaw it and bid it out. ELJ was the one who did the project, and they installed Smith &amp; Loveless pumps. Well, that was completed in July of '23, and about October of '23, my team came to me and said, we've got some vibrations going on out there with that pump. And we called them in, and the bolts were coming out, it was vibrating. So they came out, did a vibration diagnostic. They determined, hey, you need new restraint rods and new brackets. We think those are not quite large enough. If you'll go to the second slide. Okay. Again, in the spring, this past spring, those vibration issues were back. So we called them back, and we said, hey, we've got additional vibration issues. They came out and they said, we need a new platform. We're gonna do a different steel mount platform. This should solve your problem. Neither of those fixes worked. At this point, we were pushing on them to say, this is under warranty. This needs to be resolved. The only way you're gonna resolve this is to pull those pumps, figure out what's wrong with those pumps, and get us a permanent fix. Let's quit trying to just bolt it down so it doesn't vibrate. Let's figure out why it's vibrating. So Smith &amp; Loveless came out at the end of August. They finally agreed to take those pumps out. That's why the temporary pumps. And there was a couple of times before that we put tent pumps in and then taking them back out when they were out there investigating or working on them, putting the brackets, putting the new steel mount. But most recently, these tent pumps have been in there for a while. And that's because they pulled out two of the four pumps that were installed. I had an update from LKC on November 18th, and they said those two pumps, they're fixing the bearings on them, Smith &amp; Loveless is, those two pumps should be reinstalled within the next two weeks. When they put those two pumps back in, if they run like they're supposed to, and they see that, hey, this was what it was, and it's a fix, they're gonna take the other two out, and they estimate another two to three weeks to get those two fixed and put them back in. And so it's frustrating. I know it is. I apologize. I know there's sound there. But the goal is being on the optimistic side. LKC says by the first of the year, we should have this final fix. The reason that our team hasn't gone in there and messed with it and tried to fix it is that if we do that, we negate the warranty. And you know how that is. We start working on it, then the warranty goes away because they say, well, you've messed with it, and maybe you messed it up. So that's why it's been such a long drawn-out ordeal. And I do apologize that our team hasn't been able to address it more, but we're ensuring that we utilize that warranty and we don't use more public funds to try to fix it because it is a responsibility of those contractors who put it in. Right now, those pumps ensure that we keep New Century and Union Pines open. Without those tent pumps, we'd have to close the school because we couldn't use water or sewer. So it is not something that we can really do without. It's kind of a necessity at this point. They run in five- and 15-minute intervals, and so they don't run continuously. They run on a needs base. One of the things that you probably, I know you've had a couple of calls, I think you've called me, Kim, and Emily, saying, hey, we're getting a complaint. Twice, we've had those tent pumps short-cycle. And, you know, when something short-cycles, that means it just continues to run and it doesn't cut off properly. So our guys had to get folks out, get Sunbelt out, take a look at them and say, hey, they're short-cycling, and get them fixed. I think that was a couple of times, that happened twice, and I'm sure the neighbors were frustrated because they didn't turn off, right? The other time that you probably are gonna get more folks saying, gosh, what's going on with the pumps, is that because it is on an at-need basis, when you have a huge Union Pines football game that happens at night, then those pumps are gonna happen to start up more at night. When there are no after-school nighttime activities, then the pumps are gonna be relatively quiet. They're gonna finish up the business for the day, and they're probably not gonna run very much. But if there's a large activity going on at one of those schools, then you will hear those pumps run in the evening, five and 15-minute intervals. I also think that with the loss of leads- I also think that with the loss of leaves on the trees, that sounds crazy, but I, I think it's realistic, that that gave some insulation between the neighborhood and the pumps. But they're running right now about an hour a day, and that's in intervals. If you take a look, this is the runtime log I have my guys keep, just so we know how long it's running. This kind of helps us prevent short-cycling. We know, because after it short-cycled a couple of times, I said, "We've got to make sure we know if it's short-cycling." So they go out each day, and on every Monday, if they've been a weekend, and they take the hours that the pump has run. So you can see that from the fourth to the fifth, that's over, you know, not a weekend, it's from one day to the next. Pump one was at one hundred ninety-three point four hours, the next day, it was at one hundred ninety-four point three. So you can see, it's running an average about an hour a day, sometimes just a little more, sometimes right at it, but this gives you the pump runtime. And so hopefully, by the first of the year, we can get rid of those tent pumps. We've really had no issues with the lift station at High Falls, same kind of pumps, same engineering. I think we just got some lemons in the pump station that we have here at New Century, for lack of a better word, because it's running perfectly at High Falls, and it's the same, you know, same engineering, same construction folks putting it in. So we do apologize for the inconvenience, but hopefully, that gives you some insight into what we're dealing with, and when you talk with folks, let them know the final fix is currently happening, and they have those pumps pulled. So I hope by the first of the year, or sooner, to have that permanently fixed. Yes, Ms. McDonald?
Is there any way to better muffle those diesel engines that are, that are doing the pumping?
Yeah, we, we talked about that, but I think that in order to do that, we'd be putting money, right much money in to do that, because you can't put anything close to them, right? So it'd have to be a larger barrier around. I did ask Sunbelt, I said, "Hey, tell me," this was after getting one of you ladies, you know, sharing some complaints with me, "What's the decibels of this, and in comparison to something else?" And they said, "This at twenty-four feet away would be sixty-eight decibels. For comparison, if you've got a football game with the band going on, you know, everybody's cheering and the band's playing, that's eighty to a hundred," was the comparison they gave me. It is loud, but it does run during the school day, and so that gives you an idea that it's not so intrusive that instruction can't happen. It's annoying, but it's not so loud that it, you know, obstructs instructions. So I think, Mr. McDonald, if this were something that were going to be permanent, then certainly we'd have to look at a wall, or some type of sound barrier, but the return on investment, the price that it would cost us for that, with this, you know, the fix being imminent, I don't think would be something we'd move towards.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, so to kind of echo some of the stuff that, that we've heard, so this, this has been going on for seven months. And, and I understand that it's, it's, it's very expensive for you to run the diesel on these things, but seven months to have these things running is, is a little extreme. Now, one of the other things to, to discuss about this is that when these diesel generators fire up, they are a diesel engine mounted on a frame, ex- just an external frame. Now, they run at high RPMs when they fire up, because they're there to dump whatever they've got to pump out as fast as possible. So this isn't like, hey, it idles for a certain amount of time. This is a diesel engine that is running at high RPM, and so it's, it's loud. And, and so, you know, this is, this is not to negate any of the stuff that you've said, but this is to show it from our vantage point.
Sure.
One of the things, so Carthage is a utility provider. That's what we specialize in when it comes down to our water system, so we're kind of split. We run the municipality, but we also provide utilities. If a pump, which we actually have the same pump down in Little River, if a pump went down in our town, and it was down for one week, you would expect zombies to be walking on the street. This would be apocalypse stuff for us. Just unheard of that this would, this would go on this long. And then to have it go on for seven months, I understand there was legal problems, I understand that, that's a thing, but it's unfathomable to us that, that a pump could go down that long.
Well, and I think it, it is very frustrating for us as well, because during that seven months, the company presented two different fixes. The first fix, this is it, we've got it, it didn't work. The second fix, oh, well, because the first one didn't work, okay, let us see what we can do next. Well, that took a bit for them to plan, and then they came back and did it, that didn't work. So now we're on the third fix, which is the most expensive fix for them, but it's the one that needs to happen, and so you're right. I mean, it's, it's been a long time, and it's frustrating, which is why we had to get legal involved, to finally get something to happen.
So one of the other things we, we looked at is, we identified who you rented your pumps through.
Sunbelt.
Yes, and they actually rent out an enclosed engine that's quieter. It has a box around it, and it's designed to be quieter. Same pump, it's just enclosed, it's supposed to be quieter. I, I don't know why this hasn't been considered yet, but.
I'll bring that up to maintenance, and we'll take a look, see why.
It does cost a little bit more, but it is a lot quieter. One of the things that I'm hearing from people is, they say, "Hey, I feel like I'm back in Kandahar." Like, I am, I am sitting there, and the, the diesel generators fire up in the middle of the night. I feel like I'm back overseas. But they have, addition to kind of like, sound like they're running around like power generation units that are running an entire installation, because they are running at high RPMs, they said, "Okay, well, hey, cool, I'm on my porch, and now I have diesel fumes, and I'm, I'm also welcome with the smell of sewage." So, yeah, that's, that's, and, and they, they've been calling us and saying, "Hey, can you fix it?" And we said, "We can't, we, it's not ours, it's, it belongs to the school." But I, I, I feel that you should have this as, as kind of some perspective. I understand that you have your own, own pain with this, but if we don't tell you what kind of pain is coming from the adjacent neighbors.
Right.
You know, you don't get to see that side of it.
Sure, and I appreciate that, and I acknowledge, it's, it's an issue, and one that needs to be resolved quickly.
The strip that's right beside the pump, the only thing that people complained about was the noise, and I had someone actually, you know, give me information as far as the decimal reading. It was the average of eighty-seven, and it went as high as ninety-six. And that was, you know, tree buffers and the whole, and this was, you know, taken during a period where you didn't have leaves falling, so I can imagine it's probably higher, and...
And that was for this pump, sir?
Yes.
Okay. That's not what we got from Sunbelt, but that's, that's good to know.
I mean, I'm just sharing your opinion.
Yeah, yeah. I just want you to know, that's, you know, the information was from, directly from the company, so that's where we got that.
I, I will also share, so this is, this is a good, I, I, I looked at this problem right here, and we, we said, "All right, well, this is, this has taken so long to get fixed." It kind of goes, it segues into our initial conversation this evening. If you're in Carthage, we run all those repairs. We do that for everyone in Carthage. It's, it's part of our utility system. So if this were to happen, and we had owned that infrastructure, it would have been fixed way faster. So there, there is, that's another perk to coming in, because we are utility providers by design, this is what we do, we've got backups, we have knowledge on this stuff. We, we just kind of fixed it very quickly.
That makes me think, Dan, when you're thinking about that, back to the need more property, and I'm just looking at the notes here, it said installation of a need, of a lift station would be required, is that something the town of Carthage would pay for?
Not pay for it, but if you install it, we would.
But you would maintain it once it's put in.
Well, we've done that tons of times, yeah. I would have to talk to everyone here, but, yeah, go ahead.
I would recommend discussion on that.
Okay. I just was hearing him say that would be something you guys would cover, and I would, just wondering if you had had discussion on that.
So a lot of that information is coming from me, being chief of operations for the town, basically as the town manager. With the pump scenario that's happened at New Century Middle School, and just in thinking about it, with the potential for the new Carthage Elementary School to potentially be located out at Vass Carthage Road, I definitely recommend it to my board, and I recommend to you all as well, that we have conversations about how we are going to move forward, regardless of that location, as far as your lift stations and your lines. You know, there are things you can do, you can do cost-sharing agreements, you can do all kinds of things, and that is something that we would need to figure out.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
That's a, that's more eloquent than, than I could have done, so, thank you. Like I said, they know what they're doing.
All right. Hearing no more comments, we're ready to move to item four, board comments. So I'm just going to open the floor to anyone that would like to share a comment about our meeting today, or anything else that you feel on your heart. So the floor's open.
We tend to go this way.
Okay, yeah, whatever's comfortable.
Thank you for the time to be out here and discuss the school situation. Dan has put a lot of effort into providing options for this, for it to be considered for a new Carthage Elementary School. The, I guess I'd say, I'd like to see it in Carthage also. From an engineering standpoint, I have a lot of concerns about traffic in this area if the school is built out here. I've heard it said that you've been talking to some DOT folks about, you know, backups, but when you get out into an area like this, bringing in six or seven hundred kids by bus and car, there's a lot of things, improvements that are needed in the roadways, and it's like, I think it was the chairman of the County Board of Commissioners said that at the Aberne, New Aberdeen School, where the driveway ties into the, I guess it's NC-5, there's a lot of backup, and there's a lot of issues with the school out there, so you, you need to be forward-thinking wherever you're, and particularly if you, this is selected, down on fifteen-five-oh-one, there's a center turn lane and right turn lane for northbound cars, but at this particular intersection here, I think y'all would need a, a traffic engineer to design improvements at this intersection and along Joel Road. Thank you.
The Carthage Board has a bunch of interesting capabilities and skillsets on it. One thing that he did not mention is that he is a retired NCDOT engineer. So, yeah, whenever, whenever something comes up with a road, we just look at him. Yeah. But, yeah, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate, I appreciate the boards being able to get together and, and discuss this. I, I thank you for, for entertaining all the different options that we provided here, and we look forward to working with you more in the future, and, yeah, thank you very much.
I'll keep it short and sweet, echo the same sentiments, I would just say that if there's something you guys need from us, as far as for us to meet, we can call a meeting within forty-eight hours, so don't hesitate, if you're like, "We need to know from Carthage, A, B, and C," we can have a meeting, so I just put it out there in case you're wondering how quickly we can move. But again, just thank all of you, I mean, I think it's been a great conversation. What I would encourage us all to do is not make this the first and only conversation, because I think we'll need to have coordination, probably on other things as we move forward, and not just for a school, but other endeavors, because you guys are in fact in Carthage. So I would encourage that, on some basis, be it quarterly, be it even an annual basis, it might be a good idea to have a joint session, to have discussions. I think in doing that, it would probably help foster, you know, some collegiality, if you will, but also kind of help promulgate and handle some issues on the front end, as opposed to perhaps trying to triage it on the back end, so that's it.
Well, I just want to say it's good to meet you all, and I do really appreciate your time, and, and the opportunity to talk with you.
Okay. All right, our board. Board of Education?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming together. Unfortunately, we should have done this about three months ago, perhaps, but better late than never, and you're right, we need to continue the conversation here, we need to build on what we started today. Thanks very much for everything.
Yeah, I, I really want to thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for coming today, you were just awesome. Dan, every time I call you, or every time you call me, you always solve the problems, you're just amazing. But I loved it with the Carthage Police Department pickup and drop-off, the water and sewer, the fiber, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department. I'm a big, big advocate of community schools. I don't like them out, I like them in the town. I think that that's important for a community, I think it's cohesion, I think everybody watches everybody else's children, and you don't get lost in the system. They're the same people you go to church with, they're the same people you shop with, they're the same people you eat with. You get to know the families, you get to know the students, and I think that's a very important thing in bringing up our children. I really want to thank you for all the work that you did, I mean, it was absolutely terrific. Thank you.
All right, we share a mic now. Echoing also thank you, great to meet you guys, glad you guys are here, hope this becomes an ongoing thing. I also want to shout out the staff, knowing that you guys are working extremely hard on this. Shout out our staff, who have done outstanding work on this, and also the staff that are not here, because I know that there's people behind you guys that are helping to make this work, too, so thank you very much for that. Definitely want to keep engaging, keep this conversation going. I think this is great, always, more engagement is better, more communication is always better on these things, make sure to do that. We definitely moved quickly on this, and I just want to make sure that folks know that I personally, and if you go back and look at our public hearing on February the third, this board very much wants to move quickly on things, and so I hope that the more engagement we have, the quicker we can move. And also throw this out there, as we're continuing to engage, not just on Carthage Elementary, but also how are we going to be proactive on the site that the current Carthage Elementary sits? So let's keep that conversation going, let's keep that as something we can really do, something great for the community, so, thank you guys, and ladies.
A couple things, one is, so, again, like everyone else, I'm glad we had this meeting, it's long overdue, we need to have more elected official-to-elected official strategic discussions and decision-making, and that's, you know, everything else will fall in line after that. You know, the reason we're here is for two reasons. One is, I and other board members became concerned a month or so ago that there were unaddressed concerns, I, you know, that the public raised, and yeah, you know, it was at the ninth hour, but, you know, so what, the ninth hour's still, you know, before we got in the end zone, right? So, so there were two things, there were unaddressed concern, valid concerns of citizens, and then there were unexplored courses of action, right? As long as we explore those concerns, and answer them, and address them, as long as we properly explore the courses of action, as long as those two things are addressed, I'm happy, and then the site's, whatever the site needs to be, but I just wasn't comfortable moving forward with the unaddressed concerns and the unexplored courses of action. And this meeting was fruitful for many reasons. One is, I didn't know anything about this bypass, you know, and that's good information, because that's going to be a future growth corridor. So, you know, going through the three different options, you know, there's a seventy-five-acre parcel, and yes, there's challenging terrain, you know, maybe you could look down towards the pond, it looks like it, it even, you know, levels out a bit, maybe the school could be back there, maybe it's completely useless, I don't know. There's the property off fifteen-five-oh-one, that now that there's the potential new access points, you know, that becomes viable, and then, of course, there's the, you know, the last property, that all of a sudden, wow, there's a bypass, I didn't know about that, again, future growth corridor. So this is all things that we need to thoughtfully consider, rapidly and thoughtfully consider, we need to come up with a process that we're going to consider it. The other thing that I would say is that, you know, more counties growing, you know, are we going to be able to build schools fast enough? You know, I, I don't know. Carthage wants a school inside its core, so, you know, you can kill more than two birds with one stone, in that, what are we going to do with the old Carthage Elementary? You know? You know, and if you want to give the best value to the taxpayers, which was one of the stated values of the, or precepts of the board going into this, then what we do is, we end up with two schools, and when we sell off that, that school, we ensure that it ends up in the hands of a charter school so that they can build out a school at no cost to the taxpayers. And we end up with a, with a six-hundred-seat school and whatever the existing capacity of Carthage Elementary is, and Carthage still ends up with a school downtown. So, you know, let's not forget that there could still be an additional school on the back end of this, or maybe Moore County Schools decides to, to refurbish it ourselves and put a central office there or put another, a smaller community school. But, but my point of saying this last part is, whether it's a charter school, a Moore County school facility of some sort or another, you know, there's still the possibility, great possibility, that the current Carthage Elementary remains a school facility. Conversation for another day.
Just to finalize, just thank you so much for being here today. It means the world to us to have a, a really great conversation, to be able to talk to you and listen to you. What made me happiest was that the goal is for a new Carthage Elementary School, for a, a school for our Carthage community. And yes, we do need to look way down the road when we're building that school. We need to think about future generations. This is American Education Week, which I think, you know, this is a testament today of the hard work of those that came before us. And John, I was here a long time ago too. But it, it really is a testament to when we come together as a group, when we work together, that things can happen for the, for the good of our, our children. And thank you to our staff. Thank you, Dr. Locklear and Ms. Purvis. Thank you, Mr. Benello and Ms. Emily. Thank you for being here and all the hard work. Thank you to our audience for coming today. We're listening. We really appreciate your time and effort and your attention to the children of Moore County. So, with that being said, we're at item...
Comment.
Oh, sorry. Yes, sir.
You, you realize that the Carthage Elementary School, when built, had a garden in the middle of it? And I don't know whether any of y'all ever saw it or not, but I'll, you know, I left Carthage. I was gone for thirty years and came back, and I went into school, and I started looking for the garden. It had been turned into classrooms.
Yes, sir. And gardens are important. So, we're at item five, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Benway, second. Second by Mr. Benello. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, guys, for being here. Ladies, thank you.